I make my motion to be approved of resolution.
Thank you.
I have a motion in a second.
Please second it, Dr. Dawson.
I didn't apply.
Oh, there. The movie got full, so I had to change car now.
No.
I don't know what, please. Okay. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Hello.
Mr. Sturridge?
Yes.
Mr. Patterson?
Mayor is checking the flats at Dawson Valley. Dawson Valley has 25-foot heath and they're running along that green space there.
So it's 35 feet total?
Yes.
25 plus. On the Dawson Valley, 25 is 20 feet.
Yes. 25 feet.
25 feet. Not including the green space?
No.
Okay. We revisit that or just move on? Okay. Uh, okay. Uh, we've done the street. Finance resolution authorizing purchase card program with Harvest.
Yeah, as best I can. Tammy may need help with it a little bit, I don't know. Um, we are moving on from regions who we currently have purchase card program with. And Tammy and Mayor and Tom basically have been in all meetings real hot heavy with the Harvest. They've offered a program that is hard to turn down because it's cash back. It gets redeposited back into our general fund for every dollar spent. Plus, we can get rid of Fuel Man and they have where they can set our cards for the other employees that use, that do the fuel. And we don't have to use Fuel Man anymore. We can use Harvest purchase cards for fuel. And Fuel Man is the biggest headache on the facility. Even today, Shannon was having royal problems with them. And it's just gonna be a better program apparently.
So what we doing with the local bank as opposed to make out of town?
Yeah.
Does the Farmers Bank do the same thing?
Well, I don't know.
They haven't approached us without.
They didn't approach us or we didn't approach them?
They didn't approach us.
Either.
Either or.
Well, we should.
I don't think, I don't think any other bank offers a cash back. I want to present our rewards right. I have a Harvest debit card that does the federal cash back thing.
What's the difference between getting a break wise off taxes on fuel to what we're gonna say?
Yeah, police may want to stay with human, I don't know. But, cause they're, they get a federal tax break of some sort on their fuel, just police does.
Through Fuel Man only?
Yes.
All right, let me make sure we're clear. You're saying that Farmers Bank has not had the same thing?
Cash back.
None of that aware of.
One of you says yes and one of you says I don't know.
Have not checked with them, I highly doubt it. I will say that we have all our assets in Farmers Bank.
I wanna make sure the local bank.
Harvest is local.
Harvest is not as local as the guy, the bank that has two owners living here in Greenwood, or three owners. That's lower. Wanna make sure Farmers Bank has not had the same thing.
Who owns Harvest, where they live?
Waltons. They live in Bentonville. I don't know how that's not, how that's local, but when you got Stan helping Ed Wilkson.
We're not anti-farmers, but.
We have all of our assets.
My take is, if we can help, they don't have one over here to help. Not everybody lives there.
I understand. Well, we can do that.
So they also got an extensive software that is going to.
It's a, yes, it is, it's a real-time software that, um, that Tom can control if, for instance, one of our apartment heads is out and needs, um...
Credit limit increase?
Needs a credit limit increase. Or if there is an officer out that only has the privilege of buying fuel, but say if he needs, I don't know, just, just something off the top of your head like that.
Flashlight battery.
Flashlight battery or a car, or your tire blows out and they need a car fix for whatever reason. Tom, he can call Tom or call me and we can talk to Tom and he can go into the computer right then and settle and say he needs $500 to get his tire fitting store, to get his car getting back here. He can set that limit right then. And as soon as he gets that paid for, he can turn it off. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of good.
We can actually do that with regions. The big deal though was that software that is gonna plug directly into our accounting system and actually put everything in there aligned out of its tabular to our chart account.
Yes.
And it's fancy.
Harvest is gonna go in.
It's real charge, we're gonna take our chart of accounts and it's gonna, it's gonna directly connect to our system and say for fuel, it will go into the fuel account. It will go into maintenance or repairs or whatever it is.
All right.
Tax.
Let's not, let's not.
Yeah, Tom's much better at than me.
The fuel, you talking about, there is a, you can fuel in the police department? Could, they, they, yes, they give a federal, they do not pay federal taxes on the Fuel Man.
But that's a federal tax thing, that should exist no matter how you pay for it.
They can't do it, Harvest can't do that because it's not a fuel thing. They're just gonna restrict cards for fuel, they don't have.
Can't you get the credit either way? I mean, if that's a federal credit.
Yeah, we're gonna get credit, the cash back credit. So you can say.
He's talking about, you know.
He's talking about staying.
He's not, there, Harvest is not just a fuel card.
Fuel Man is just a fuel card.
But if you get a federal credit for buying fuel, whatever your fuel expenses are, can you not get that credit back? I mean, it's.
You're not getting the credit, you guess doesn't pay federal taxes on it.
Right, with an exemption.
That's, that's an exemption.
At, at time of purchase.
Yes.
And I will say that, you know, I'm, I'm serious, like, they, they charge it for a card fee and if, they'll look at payment that we sent, sit there in a log box and then go get it and do like charges like $75 once per day.
If you use Harvest to purchase the fuel and you're entitled to a fuel credit, you should be able to get your fuel credit. I mean, you're gonna get it on the back end instead of at the point of purchase. Right? But.
He's saying take your Harvest receipts and turn them in for your federal.
Right. Take your financial system and say, we bought X dollars in fuel, here's how much.
To move.
Federal government.
Right. Definitely, but that's possible, but.
That's what we're looking for. They give Fuel Man to see when I'm paying taxes or anything.
We don't, we don't do that. And I think. So it's probably something with Fuel Man, but they do, cause they got a fuel program. This is not. So either then stay with Fuel Man and the rest of them go to.
We're gonna have to budget more for fuel because that tax isn't coming out. It's gonna go right back in the general fund.
Well, you know.
Now you gotta come and transfer back in the fuel.
We don't have to pay card fees on it.
Total. Probably better off keeping a fuel card.
But what's left to do with Fuel Man is better. They are very notorious and charging like.
To Mr. Powell's concern, I think it's, I, I see his point. I think if we can, we can ask the same questions of farmers on all these regards and if the answer is no, they can't provide one or any of these services, then, then. Is that what you're?
Oh, yeah. If you say farmers cannot do this, and I've listened to everything beyond that, but if you can't say that farmers can't provide this, then we need to go ask farmers. I wanna hear the no before we go on.
We can do it.
And give a bank that's owned out of town money versus one that owners live in.
They want us to ask, they ask answers about farmers, I have facts on that, bring it back in.
Right. And then, and then once you say farmers cannot provide this service, then I find which. But until you can say farmers can't provide this service.
Check First National, that's closer.
First National.
If farmers is out, go to First National?
That sounds better than Waltons and Bentonville. I don't have anything against Waltons and Bentonville, I just prefer local.
But do you want us to ask all local?
Uh, if one that has owners that live in towns.
Well, that's a story.
Uh, the Fuel Man, does it apply to the fire department fuel expenses as well?
I have no idea, they take care of that. We don't have 5,000 in fuel, so it's a budget per year. So it probably, it'd probably wash out if all the fees that they pay at Fuel Man. Fuel Man hits us with stuff all the time. Only that, but that, you guys may get fuel because of carbon that we're. So, I mean, it's, the Harvest thing actually, it makes a lot of sense. If we wanted to do it, it'd be.
Fuel Man is obviously in very many locations around here.
Chief, what is your experience with Fuel Man?
Well, I mean, I mean, I don't pay it other than, I'm telling you. But we spend like 60,000 on fuel, so I'm not sure what the percentage is and what percentage is on charge.
One thing, when Shannon has to deal with them, she, they will not understand her, they're foreign speaking. And you just be getting a bit of a rhetorical.
You want, you want, the people you need to ask about the issue with Fuel Man are, are the, is the finance department? Because the department has a company with that.
Right.
They, they don't take those bills. They turn it in, they appeal, they turn it in.
I think, I'll say is how much of that break are we getting compared to the 1% back? I think the break we're getting is gonna be a higher number than what.
Well, that's, that's when, and we talked about that, Chief, in the meetings, is that when.
That's what I was restricted on.
Yes, whatever power, we look at power, that turns out as hell would makes the decision whether you keep Fuel Man or not. But, but the rest of the city, it's very apparent that the 1% is a no-brainer. But it's checking with other banks and fine, we don't have an issue. I mean, that's what you wanna do. I, I'm hesitant to say this because I don't want to start anything that we, we, that I don't need to. But I would consider, ask the council to, at some point, to consider what your, what your thought is on administrative decisions and not.
Yeah, you're going to.
I just, sometimes it just seems a little, it brings up a duty that.
We've met our family.
We don't, we don't even bring this to.
We're making the part now. Yeah, no, it's fine to get it done.
But, but I, but I respect the council, I'm not, I'm not saying that I don't respect.
Are you saying changing all the few minutes we had administrative due?
I agree.
Yes, sir.
I agree.
Well, somebody will make a motion on this resolution and see what happens?
I'll make a motion, make it pass this resolution.
Take it.
I have a motion in a second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
No.
Mr. Daniel?
Mr. Nelson.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Sturridge?
Yes.
And who carries?
Thank you. Number 10, I think, budget resolution for advertising the police department.
Obviously, we didn't plan on advertising this much, this year broke the position of a tattoo. And I believe Kristen also said in the past, ordinance, uh, publications came on down front and now they're coming out of departments funding, is that right? I didn't ask about that earlier in the meeting.
General funds department wise.
Right. So now, anyway, we're over 200 in advertising for the year. So we had one of the office supplies to advertising to make that budget over.
Make a motion to pass this resolution.
Motion in a second, pass.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Sturridge?
Thank you. Number 11, finance, budget resolution for animal control registration and animal control cost.
Assure animal control and budget and $300 down for us bringing that amount of revenue for assurance for animals. Actual money is 6,000, that's the change, I see we just put 6,000 now. There's, there's more than the amount that we forecasted and his actual amount he's spending on housing dogs is a lot more than what we put in there for this budget. And that's with him not picking up dogs, you know, for at least four months this year. So we need more money in his fund to house these dogs that he's picking up for the remaining two months.
We'll go ahead and, uh, trust me. Right now, this money's coming out of the general fund, is what the president is doing to this resolution?
Yes, but the money was positive in there from registrations that we took in throughout the year.
Okay, so 6,000 is in general fund under animal registration?
It's in general fund, I need it moved to.
Right, but it's.
In revenue, yes.
Okay, it's revenue from animal registration?
Yes.
Make a motion to pass this resolution. Take it.
Motion in a second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sturridge?
Yes.
Mr. Sturridge?
Thank you. Um, did we move your other issue, number 13, that?
I'm not sure what number it was.
13, we're waiting for it.
We, we put in grants, which we always have a year for best. And the money came in, I just need the money moved back to them to be able to.
Make a motion to pass this resolution? Take it.
Motion in a second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Sturridge?
Yes.
Can you make a weaker or?
It's this one.
Sir?
I may have missed all those out.
Which one?
Increased capital, registration from general fund for other purposes, says we have, because not sold. Sorry, so I got it.
Got it. Department reports, questions from council. Anything you wanna know from whose left? Chief?
Mayor, Mr. Terry, and Mr. Hannity, council. In our budget this year, we have repair of our roof and MHD, or Mike has been working on that for me and trying to get some stuff together. And we're hoping we're gonna be able to have some stuff ready by tonight, but hopefully it'll be able to have things ready where we can at least get the bid, get the advertisement out and stuff that we have to bid by next meeting. But if there's a possibility, we have it ready to be bid before that. Was there be a possibility of this council meeting and special session to accept the bids? But right now, we have to wait till the next council meeting where the bids are set up. And if I push it back, the time the contract gets done, it'll be in the next, next year before the pay is due. Does that make any sense? Right now, I have to wait until the next council meeting before we build the bids.
Are you asking us?
About $50,000.
Are you telling us we need to set a date for a special meeting?
Well, if I, if I can.
You just let us know we need to.
That's why I wanted, we'll be okay if, if we did that or do it to the task of meeting, yeah, council meeting.
How much is anticipated on cost?
Uh, well, we've only budgeted 50.
50,000?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's, it's not huge, it's not small, but.
I don't think the council wants to give you authority to open bids and accept bids if it's 50,000. I think you just call a special call meeting.
Okay. All right, well, I just wanted to throw that out there instead of, you know, what's this all about? So it'd be nice for us if we could get it done before then, that way the process would be started and hopefully we get our thing done and pay before the end of the year. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, chief. Anybody else, Department is? Ms. Kinslow, did you have something in, in late?
Mayor, I was gonna ask, I see that Tom's not here, is there anything with this, why is he not here? Or?
She had surgery today, I believe it was to remove the brace, the ring and roll thing that's been on her arm all this time. I haven't heard that we got.
Yeah, I didn't. All the things gone wrong, she got out of surgery at five and we headed home and.
Did they remove it?
Yes, she has a next appointment November 30th and she'll be released for weight gain. Yeah, it was just about progress made on her arm.
Yeah. And I think Tom did say the other day that this was his last scheduled surgery if everything goes well. And I tell you, here's a, and, and do remember her prayer, obviously, because it's a long recovery and you heard what she went through near death. But Tom has been just steadfast and coming to work at 4:30 in the morning if he needs to and staying till whenever. I mean, this guy is just, is going above and beyond, called duty.
Maybe he needs a night.
And then while I'm talking about prayer, if you don't mind, Jessica, don't forget Jessica's dad, who's, it sounded like you did a little bit better, if you remember, remember him. And I've got one announcement before we wrap up the forum, but dedication, we, thanks to the street department, big time, major league.
Can I say something real quick? I really wanna say something.
Sure.
All right. The person's not here.
You're gonna brag one more.
So the last few days, we've been kinda putting the fire in the street department and the Parks Department guys really came through and helped us out. And I just wanted to say that the street department and myself appreciate their help the last few days.
Thank you. Uh, those guys, all of those guys, both of those departments, they placed the boulders, rocks, sand, removed the landscaping, we did that the other day. And they, we, we did have to hire Crane, by the way, to come in and safely do this under the clock tires to not get anybody killed safely. So we did hire Crane to come in and place the boulders and the eagle is there and it's coming with the tarp. But we have a dedication for that Saturday, remember this coming Saturday at 10:00 a.m. For love for anybody and everybody that can come down, it'll be very short, I promise you. It won't take long.
Saturday also was open, we can put the tarp in the.
Yeah, yeah. So wear your, wear your orange vest and, you know, shoot your deer early and get out there at 10 and go back to the woods. So we'd love to have you, I don't expect a big crowd, but anybody that can, it's a dedication. I think it's, it's awesome, it looks great. Looks great, I think you'd be proud. So, that's that. The council, warm.
Hi, gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
Happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
Look at you, man.
60 is the new 40.
Hey, I had somebody approach me.
You're killing it.
I'm killing it.
See if you might consider making a proclamation about national nurse practitioner week.
Man, I proclaimate all day long.
I told them to just be happy to consider that and I just have to recall.
Sure, Tammy, get information, Tammy. We love proclamations. I gave one to a 90-year-old lady this week, we're at The Rock, it's a Millie Rose mom, that's a treat, you know her, you know a treat, she does not look 90 or act 90, so we did that.
And November is hospice.
And then this morning, after being at the square, we came over and did a proclamation for hospice and for Peachtree, it's hospice month. And, uh, and that's near and dear to my heart because we've used those folks a couple of times now. We didn't, oh, Eagle Scouts continue to be produced through each, through every quarter. Pretty awesome, so we, I had the opportunity and honored to be in the Bell Park this weekend and do one for the Tyler, we did the project of Walmart Trail, which is just real close. Yeah, we'd love to do that. Anytime anybody has anything like that, and I talked to Coach Golden, both Coach Goldens today, we will have them here next month, we'll congratulate them on what they did with volleyball. And I've missed some, probably golf team, whoever has done well and won championships or, or didn't, you don't have to necessarily win, we wanna bring them in.
No need to win.
And recognize them, so y'all let us cross country.
First class.
Yeah. You not, you not counted?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, but anything like that, I mean, that's just good stuff, that's good PR and I think it makes the citizens feel good and certainly the kids and most parents, so. I guarantee Coach Golden that they would not have stayed for the council meeting if you come in early and you get it, so. Anything else from you guys?
I got some stuff.
Yes, sir.
One is our, we have a little kind of just pitch up, jump around, but we'll do the annexation about as far as getting it. Are we gonna try to do that on a special election for 2018 or?
Yes, I would love to have a special design.
The reason I'm asking it, it all comes down to this because I brought it up many times about wanting that tax for the fire department on the Station 3 to go ahead and get started and buy some equipment. And when I brought it up, you know, Mike said, get, kinda get a proposal together, we'll, you know, Chief and I talked and I got with Michael, John, because they're in the middle of doing a fire station right now at the 188th out there, I believe they've been out there, so the real numbers. We, we've got a wish list here, I mean, a proposed number of just ballpark and preliminary stuff for, for some trucks and, and the, and the, um, the station. And, but what my point to this is about, because I was, we're gonna try to put that on for a special, I was, I wanna, what I gotta do is move forward to get this put on, some citizens go on it and like, because I don't know if we're gonna have to, the bond attorney's in this, so we can, I mean, we're looking at to build the station and it's nothing, I mean, just kind of a ballpark. Like I said, this ain't nothing in stone, but it's just some decent numbers, whatever that stuff provide. For the trucks and the station, you're, you're below $40,000. You know, I mean, that's, that's the whole shooting match. And, and that can change with taking a truck out or doing some different stuff on the station, but I need y'all's blessing, I guess, for us to move forward farther because, I mean, if we're gonna try to do a special election in 2018, I mean, I'm sure there's some work we're gonna have to do to get all this ready to go and put on there. So I'm looking for a little input and some guidance here too. I'm looking to do the legwork, I just.
So we need guidance for the bond attorney, Jack?
Yeah, I got a little speed dial, so I will call, see if the charges come to the meeting to talk to us.
No charge?
No charge.
That would be great.
You know, needs last.
This is a real.
So that, pretty much what we need to move next, Mike, is have them, if they can, come to one of the meetings.
Have them come and I think somebody is working with, I'm calling them on the annexation issue and I think he needs to be kinda spearheading, helping us. I, I talked to him before, but he wasn't spearheading, but I, I think it's time in order to make sure that we proceed cautiously, that he needs to be significantly involved and kinda help us period ongoing. But, yeah, I, bond counsel always tell them, we'll be here, you want me to have it here next month?
But I would like to, because I mean, I don't know what, what else is involved for us to do and I don't want to wait for the last minute and you have a bunch of stuff to do.
I'll probably have it here.
I, when you come on the street, I'll, I have a question that you might bring with you.
Good.
So if we have sales tax projections in our 10-year sunset of maybe 3 and 1/2 million and we're gonna spend 4 million, can we extend that sunset using the existing sales tax?
Till the debt settle.
Till the debt settle. Like, how like what we do at the police station? You know, once, once the debt settled, it goes away. Can we do the same thing like we did at the police station with our existing sales tax?
I'll have a, I'll have a reaction for you.
Because like I said, my thought about moving forward on this is that stuff's not getting any cheaper. You know what I'm saying? I mean, I, I set for two hours of visit with the guy with the, the fire apparatus stuff and then, then cheap book is, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, six months means, could mean $50,000. I mean, it's the way the, the price mark is on some of that stuff, so I just, you know, I thought if we could bond this tax and move forward with that, I think it'd be only a good thing for us and the citizens, so. I wanna move forward if I can.
And, and are you proposing or not proposing or is it open for discussion for all, for the whole 30%, sales tax to be bonded or for all?
Well, I mean, the way I put it is, I brought it, I brought it up to, you know, and, and like I said, I mean, they don't, I mean, no offense to them, but they don't have, they haven't been working on them deal and I, and I brought it up for years, you know? So, and my thought process is, you know, I mean, like Dog and Rod are the big park advocates. I mean, it's just bottom line is, I mean, just laying it out there and they're not, I'm just saying if they want to take the role of one of the, in the park deal and put something, my thought is is if they only get on board, I, I'm not looking at, I'm looking at doing the fire problem.
No, no, that's one, yeah.
I mean, that's.
Okay.
Long story short. Yeah.
How much, how much the, what about the, uh, guys here? Traditionally, it's not been thirty, fifty thousand.
Well, I, I did a recent sales tax bill, average, been averaging about a hundred and eight thousand a month.
Two and eight.
Yeah, it's getting booked there.
Yeah.
Closer to three hundred.
But that is the one percent.
Yeah.
And that, I don't know what the, yes, I mean, it's a very.
You gotta take the whole water tower out.
And if you look at the way we originally started, we were pulling about one seventy-five. And now we're pushing three hundred. So it'd be nice to have somebody do a projection on that. And if we exceed in that projection to see if by voting on that, citizens voting on the bond, if they could actually extend the sunset to that, to the end of that bond. That's what I wanna know.[1697.92]